I call this October 13th meeting of the Riverside Township Board of Trustees to order. Please rise and join. Trustee Clark, if you would lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Clerk Flau, would you please call the roll?
Just one second.
Sure.
Sorry to detain everybody.
Oh, well, no.
Sorry.
Okay.
Trustee Clark.
President.
Trustee Drapka.
President and accountant.
Trustee Highlandback.
Brother.
Trustee Lupfer.
Here.
Supervisor Wilt.
Here.
Let the record note Clerk Flau is in attendance.
Okay, thank you. We have in our packets the minutes of the September 8th Board of Trustees' meeting. What is your pleasure?
Motion to approve the minutes of the September 8th Board of Trustees' meeting.
I have a motion to accept. Do I hear a second?
Second.
I have a motion by Trustee Clark, second by Trustee Lupfer, to approve the minutes of the September 8th Board meeting. Are there any additions or corrections? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion is carried.
Supervisor Wilt, I have to abstain. I wasn't at that meeting.
Thank you. The record will so note that Trustee Highlandback has abstained. The minutes of the October 6th Committee of the Whole are also before you. What is your pleasure with those?
Motion to approve the minutes of the October 6th 2020 Committee of the Whole meeting.
I have a motion by Trustee Clark to approve the minutes of the October 6th meeting. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Trustee Highlandback seconds. Any additions or corrections? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, nay. Motion is carried. Thank you. Okay, are there any communications, Clerk Flau?
Yes, we received a lovely congratulation card. It's a congratulation Riverside Township celebrating 150 years from Tom and Pauline Feronic. So it was very nice that they sent in a card.
Very nice.
Even if we couldn't celebrate our birthday, we got a card.
Well, somebody remembered for us.
Right. Thank you. And that's it?
Yes.
Alrighty. Are there any public comments before we get into the meat of our agenda? Hearing none. Okay, we have with us Kenneth Nadolsky. We've met before, most of you have heard from him. For the purposes of the microphones and the TV, if you would please approach the podium, that would be helpful. So, Mr. Nadolsky is here from API, and we have the report from him of the condition of the building. I have since our Committee of the Whole sent you an updated version, which I apologize, was actually in my email bank, but I overlooked it to share it earlier. And so I know that last week when we discussed some of these things, that there were some questions. So I asked Mr. Nadolsky to be here with us. Ken, do you have any general comments to start with on this, or no?
I think if everyone has read the report and familiar with it, I don't have any comments besides that. You can answer any specific questions that you may have.
All right. Questions now?
Yeah, I'll start the show. So I did have a question concerning item number three and then item number five. So by doing, what's that?
Is that in the summary, at the end, the priorities?
Yes, suggested priorities. So my question is, by doing number five, does that negate item number three?
It would, yes. If you replace the windows, they would be new and resealed themselves. But windows are typically extremely expensive, so the sealant will buy you some additional time.
Some time, right. But I mean, if both need to be, in your experience and just taking a look, if you're saying that we need to completely overhaul anyways, then probably we shouldn't even be considering number three, we should just go into number five, no?
In a perfect world, yes. You should just do number five. It really depends on, you know, what finances you have available and the timeline of that. I wrote in number three as an option, as, you know, if you wanted to dedicate funds to other portions of the project, you know, number three is something that you could do to buy yourselves a couple, some time.
Sure. And then I have two more questions, one on item number four. Is there a way to break that down into pieces that need more attention than others? Because obviously that's a huge number there, so I think that it'd be helpful to know what are the most dire areas of the building that need to be replaced first and kind of work through that.
I can certainly revise the report to specify specific areas that are worse than others. I would say in general, there wasn't a portion of the building that I would say is fine for the foreseeable future.
Sure.
Certainly more, certainly the west side of the building has more damage than, say, the east side or even the north side. But I would recommend it all being done at once, to be honest.
Right. And I think that I would agree with that, but I, you know, rather than throwing it all down and doing the whole thing all at once, I think we'd like to take it piecemeal, speaking on behalf of myself. And I think that it'd be helpful to know which is the worst part, and then go from there and dedicate funds and do that part, and then in a couple more months dedicate funds and do that part. You know what I'm saying?
Yeah, definitely. Certainly the west side of the building is the worst, with a lot of deterioration in the grout and joints. So I would say, having not looked at the, have the pictures up now, based on my memory, that's the worst portion of it. That would be first, then south and east and north's facade would come after that.
Is that the villages portion?
Well, that's what I'm trying to identify. When you talk about the west side of the building, are you talking about the lower part of it or the upper part, like that's indented?
The lower part is particularly bad. The upper portion is not as bad as the lower portion. The lower portion has some significant.
So the stone areas are the...
Correct. The stone is generally in worse shape than the brick.
Okay.
I'm pretty sure the village has gotten to tuck point.
I think so. I mean, I think we need to, and...
Well, I'd like to point out the difference. At this point, tuck pointing, it will not solve your issue, it needs to be repointed.
Repointing, right.
There is a slight difference.
Right. And when you talk about weep holes, is that something that needs more priority attention than the overall thing? I mean, is that, or...
I wouldn't say it needs more or less. The weep hole portion is really a very minor aspect to the overall repointing of the project. It's just cell vents that are no more than six inches high, just cut into the grout at the lower and upper portions of the wall. It's not that much work at all, but it's something they would do in conjunction with the repointing, because they're cutting out the existing mortar already.
Yeah, and the villages only looking at tuck pointing, so...
Well, we're going to share the first part of it with the village, because obviously there, as you noted, when you did the first report, there's a lot of overlap and the building differences tend to, tend to cut off in not necessarily natural places, so we're going to have to cooperate with them. Part of our problem is always going to be that, because it's a historical structure, we're going to have to have approval of historical commissions and such, too.
Sure.
So going back to the windows in that regard, that could be a major project, because it's going to have to go through all kinds of approvals. So how much time would you say that the sealant would buy us in terms of the emergence, the emergency aspect or the prioritization of replacement?
I would say a couple of years.
Couple of years.
I think in the report I listed window replacement as three to four years down the road. So if you do the sealant now, which is not a major project and wouldn't affect the historical nature of it, it could get you a few years down the road to go through that process.
Okay, okay. To save up a little bit more funds for that.
Yeah, exactly. And just to touch back on the tuck pointing versus repointing, the building was tuck pointed several years ago, and there's some evidence of that, but that's already deteriorated. Tuck pointing is just a surface treatment to the existing grout and mortar, whereas repointing cuts all of the existing grout and mortar out of the brickwork and replaces it in its entirety. So it's a more significant repair, which I think is what's needed for this building at this time.
Okay.
Yeah, it's like slapping a new coat of paint on compared to sanding it down to complete wood and working back.
Right, in a comparison, sure.
They're not very comparable.
No, no.
Are these listed in order of need?
They're in order, yes, in our opinion of what needs to be done first, yes.
So we had some discussion in terms of, when we talk about the gutters, and we're talking copper, and there was some question of whether there is, since people steal copper, is there some replacement value, like if what we have there, is there some, like, trade-in value on what we would have for replacement? Is that something that's done?
Yes, definitely. There's all kinds of scrap and material purchasers who, I can't give you a price as to what someone would pay for it, but you can, there's some definite resale value to it.
So you're recommending that we replace all our copper with brand-new copper?
Well, it doesn't have to be copper, per se. I think it all needs to be replaced, yes.
You can't rework it and fix it?
For the amount of labor and work that's going to go into repair it, and I don't think it'll be financially worthwhile, no.
I get that.
Other questions?
I have just one on the window sealant. What time of year do you have to do that? In the fall, in the spring? Can you do it in the winter?
You should not do it in the winter. The temperature needs to be above 40 degrees.
Okay, so that'd be spring.
So that is something that, yeah, that is something you could do right now, if you want to do it quickly, but it's not something you can do in the winter. So if you don't plan on doing it this fall, it would have to go in the spring.
Yeah, okay.
The cooler temperatures prevent it from bonding to the material properly, so it'll detach if you don't.
And your gutter quote on number one is for just regular gutters? That doesn't, that's not the copper, I'm guessing?
No, it's not.
We need to see that.
Okay.
Yeah, absolutely, because that, I do believe the historical is gonna demand that we have copper gutters.
It will have to be copper, as opposed to just a material.
I expect it will be, yeah. I mean, we can't speak for them, but knowing what the, typically even the color of grout and so forth is, tends to be an issue.
So when we replace the roof, we should do the overflow drains at the same time, right? Because otherwise, we'll have this new roof and we will still have drainage issues.
Exactly. So I wouldn't recommend separating the roof from the gutters. If you do the gutters but don't do the roof, it doesn't solve the problem entirely. Also, conversely, if you do the roof but not the gutters, it doesn't solve the problem either. They really go hand in hand, and should be done at the same time.
So is the flat roof ours?
So again, it's, there needs to be a major discussion as to what is and isn't ours. On the photos, some of the pictures, we had a little trouble identifying the locations, what we were actually looking at when we discussed this last week. But generally speaking, the flat roofs are not ours, but...
At $130,000, I would...
Right, we need to, we need to sit down and talk with the village, because...
I would imagine they're not ours.
Well, the trouble is, I know that some of the mechanicals that are there are probably ours, and that's, so we have to figure all that into it, and we have to come to agreements.
Plus it's put up against our building, so we have to make sure that...
Yeah, so anything on our building affects that as well, so, yeah.
Is that addition on the west side, not your, not your piece of building?
Well, the east side as well, I believe, because we're looking at the police department flat roof, I think.
That's east.
Right, I'm talking about the lower portion on the west side.
The west side, those are village offices, and that, again, that is typically theirs, and that's why we need, we're going to need to identify, you know, how far the lines are going to go.
Sure. I mean, really, all the roofs need to be replaced, so determining whose is whose would be important.
I think it's very important, especially with the village's projected budget deficits. We need to be very careful about...
Committing to a project that we might wind up with ourselves?
Right, exactly.
I mean, as it is, we have some reserves, but certainly not, we know that we don't have the amounts for all of these projects right now.
And then these, these one-year, two-year comments are with the time within which we should do the job.
Correct.
Correct. So year one, we definitely need to do the roof and the copper gutters, maybe do the masonry work the next year, three to four out, do the windows. So we could be looking at a five-year timeframe to accomplish this, correct?
You could be. I mean, again, it depends on, on your funds. I mean, the more you can combine into one project, there'll be some cost savings just in scale for the contractor, but, you know, rarely do we run into municipality that's overflowing with money to do all kinds of projects.
I wonder if there are any grants available?
There has to be.
To help out with this, to look into that?
We certainly need to check into that.
We're looking at about a $2 million expenditure here, if you add everything up. So I think hiring grant writer, I think Trustee Clark's hitting it right on the head that we can't just put this all on our taxpayers. We got to figure out some way to ease that bite, so to speak. The village, I think, would be a good partner, but I also definitely think the grants would be a good avenue to go down historic buildings. It's not like it's 1982.
You know, you can compare with the village, too, since we're going to have to obviously partner with them.
Right.
They have avenues to get grants, and you guys can partner together, and maybe we can come up with something that helps both of us out to protect this beautiful building, so...
Yeah. Okay. Any warnings that you would like to call to our attention? I mean, something that you've really observed, you know, that needs immediate attention?
The electrical work on the roof of the police station was, was a little concerning. I'm not an electrician, but all the exposed cable and wires and insulation that had been torn off was concerning. I know that's not your building, per se, but I would highly recommend that an electrician inspect that more closely.
And then Supervisor Wilt, I would make sure that you bring that to the village's attention immediately, since that is a big concern.
Right. Other questions? Anybody else have?
Yeah, so your window replacement says three to four years. If we do not do the window sealant, does that timeframe still hold?
Yes.
Depending on our paying threshold, so to speak.
Correct. I mean, it's certainly not going to get better, but the windows, I think in terms of the issues that you're experiencing in this building, the windows are not the main, the main cause. So if there is one thing that you want to kick from the budget and push out, it should be the windows. The roof, gutters, and masonry are critical items.
And this window replacement is for all windows? I mean, literally every window?
Correct. I mean, I wasn't up on a scaffold and didn't inspect every, every window, but it is estimating every window. I think you have 50, 54, or something like that.
Yeah. Is that, if that bids off a little bit, it's off a lot, right?
Sure. I mean, if that's something you want to consider, where you want to replace a few of the windows or not all of them, that's something that, when you do decide to do that project, we can look at it a little bit more closely.
Yeah, so we could stagger that part of the project. We could do the top level, the bottom level, because I fear that the historic commission, preservation commission is going to tell us the windows we need to replace them with are going to be a lot more than your stock window replacement.
That was the case when front doors had to be replaced, that was, yeah.
Also, you're going to give us an estimate for these copper gutters, just a preliminary instead of regular gutters?
Yeah, I wrote that down, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Generally speaking, is that like a times three?
I would guess you're right.
Roughly.
At least. At least.
That's a material cost, though. The installation costs for a building like this are going to be pretty, a large portion of it as well.
So window sealant...
We assumed that they're installing it when the roof is being done, too, so you get some economy of scale when people are up on the roof anyway, installing the gutters.
Is your firm in a position to design, like, things for the bidding process, design the specs, or would you recommend going elsewhere for that kind of...
No, we're certainly qualified to assist you in the bidding process. We work with a lot of municipalities on similar projects. I'd have to check if building permits would be required. I imagine they would be, but to what extent, whether...
Our experience tells us that they would be required.
And I would, I would agree with that. It just depends to what extent. Is it an application with a scope of work, or do they want drawings? But to answer your question, yes, we're qualified to, and that is work that we've completed for other municipalities in the past.
Okay.
Is there, is there like a duct tape list that you could provide us, saying, throw some duct tape on these things in the next two weeks, just to get by? I mean, there seemed to me to be a couple things that really should be tended to...
Addressed quickly.
Immediately. Would you be able to prioritize that? Say, this stone here, that window there, I mean, this water infiltration right in the corner here is visible all over, so if we're going to say we're not going to replace the windows for four years, but there's one window that's causing major problems, would you be able to give us recommendations on, hey, point, not one, but point five, the very first thing you should do is A, B, C?
For some of it, yes. For the roof, you have some missing shingles where you have, literally, your roof is open to the elements. Those, you know, you could put a tarp on.
Well, that'd be the blue tarp list.
Yes, so in that respect, yes. I'm not sure that there'd be something along those lines for the masonry. You know, there could be a windower here, but certainly there are holes in your roof that, however you do it temporarily, you could do that.
And are we talking in, like, the corners, like that, the picture on, pages aren't always numbered, let's see. The large picture of, by the clock? Like, there's some arrows there, are those the kinds of holes that you're talking about?
Let's see what page this is. So on the fourth page, you've got the large picture with the clock in it.
Right.
Yeah, you've got that hole in the corner that's open. And there's a couple more like that around the building. Yes, that's what I'm talking about.
But they're usually edge places like that, or are they, like, middle of the roof?
No, they're usually at transition, so edges or corners.
Right, okay.
So like, again, I'll go back to, the masonry work will do in two years, but if there's some three holes that we need to close up before that due to emergency status, the window replacement, again, might be four years, but if there's a window that, I'd kind of like that emergency, hey, do this now, especially if we're going to stage this project. And I'd love to just do it, but we can't. But if we put our window replacement out three years and there's one that's killing us, we'd like to kind of have that, that report up front.
Sure, and I can put a list together for you. My fear is that, you know, you hire someone to do these temporary fixes and you really don't see any, any benefit to it at all. That would just be my one concern, is that. The issues are not, you know, one piece here, one piece there, they're more, you know, in its entirety, that a couple of Band-Aids, I'm not sure that you'll notice it.
The other thing is, too, is we have to get the window approved, these windows approved, through the Historical Preservation Committee, and we put one or two windows in, and all of a sudden, those windows aren't available, and then we have to take those out to match the rest of the windows when we decide to do it. You know, I see Trustee Lupfer's point on it, but I really think that we could go down a slippery slope with that, you know, just doing the blue tarp fixes, if you will.
Right. I would say, in general, the windows are not your major issue.
Okay.
So I wouldn't recommend replacing one or two here or there.
Right.
If you wanted to do some very temporary work, it would be on the roof.
Okay.
Okay. That makes sense.
Thank you. Other questions? Nope. Thank you very much, Ken.
Okay, no problem. I'll follow up with you on the, on the copper, and then the, update the report to include areas where the masonry is, is worse than others, and sort of prioritize that if you wanted to stage that as well, so...
And then also, if you could get me just a ballpark on what, what preparation of, let's say, starting with the roof, what, what cost there would be in the preparation of...
Of bid documents?
Bid documents, yeah.
Okay, yeah, we can have a conversation about that.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thanks for coming out. It was very helpful.
I also think, not to put a too fine point on it, but we do need to meet with the village.
Oh, I know, yeah, no, absolutely.
Iron that out, or property lines...
Yeah, exactly, because, you know, what I know to be one building versus the other, I haven't come across any agreements that delineate some of that, so that has to be a serious conversation. All right. Onto item B, the approval of the project management proposal for the swinging bridge repairs, in case we didn't have enough money to spend.
Thank you.
Thank you. I think we discussed that we do want to go forward with this project, and so basically, you have another copy of the proposal from Wisjani Elsner, and I would entertain a motion to approve this project management proposal.
Do you want us to make the motion for the whole $30,000, or because the construction administration, do we need...
So, we're not going to be able to do any of the rest of the administration, any of the actual project until spring at this point. So I think if we just go for phase one, that would get us through a much of the, phase one and two, that could get us through the, the winter.
Okay.
And then we could, you know, once we have that, I mean, it's up to you. We could approve the whole thing. We're going to need the administration of the project eventually, too. I just, I don't think we'll be billed for all of it at once, but if you want to approve the whole proposal now, we could do that.
Okay, so I make a motion that we approve...
I think we discussed that we do want to go forward with this project, and so basically, you have another copy of the proposal from Wes Janney Elsner, and I would entertain a motion to approve this project management proposal.
Do you want us to make the motion for the whole thirty thousand, or because the construction administration, do we need...
So, we're not going to be able to do any of the rest of the administration, any of the actual project until spring at this point. So I think if we just go for phase one, that would get us through a much of the, phase one and two, that could get us through the, the winter.
Okay.
And then we could, you know, once we have that, I mean, it's up to you. We could approve the whole thing. We're going to need the administration of the project eventually too. I just, I don't think we'll be billed for all of it at once, but if you want to approve the whole proposal now, we could do that.
Okay. So, I make a motion that we approve the swinging bridge repair proposal, which is seventeen thousand for repair documents, three thousand for the bidding process, and ten thousand for construction administration, for a total of thirty thousand.
I second.
The motion by Trustee Clark, seconded by Trustee Dropka, to approve the Riverside pedestrian, pedestrian bridge project proposal from Wes Janney Elsner for phase one, repair documents of seventeen thousand, bidding of three thousand, and the construction administration phase of ten thousand dollars. Is there any discussion?
I think in the, repeat, we should put phase two bidding three thousand and phase three construction administration.
Yes, I'm sorry, I thought I said that. Phase two bidding would be three thousand and phase three, the construction administration, for ten thousand. Any other, any discussion?
What is our threshold for no bid contracts? This thirty thousand, shouldn't we be seeking other bids for this?
We, you know, that's a good question. I'm not sure. I'm not sure.
Double checking.
I will.
It might be twenty-five thousand.
I think twenty-five seems to ring a bell, so if we're looking at...
Thirty, we got...
Thirty, we're over. We're over. Let me see. Okay, if...
Well...
Well, okay, then we'll hold off on this.
Hold on, can we do phase one and phase two now?
That would be twenty, and I know we're okay on that.
Pardon me?
There's a motion on the floor.
Well, they're going to have to recall.
This is, well, it's discussion of, of that motion, and whether it's possible to revise that motion.
So I can either rescind the current motion or revise it. So should I rescind it?
Revise it. I would revise it.
I think you can revise it if the, the secondor is willing to accept that as well.
Yeah, let's do phase one, phase two, that's...
Okay, so I'm revising my previous motion to award Wes Janney Elster Associates the bid on the swinging bridge repairs, phase one for seventeen thousand dollars and phase two bidding for three thousand dollars.
I second.
Okay, so I have a motion to approve the proposal from Wes Janney for phase one repair documents of seventeen thousand and phase two bidding process of three thousand. I have a motion by Trustee Clark, seconded by Trustee Dropka. Any further questions?
Yeah, I think we all know it's a thirty thousand dollar bid. I would like us to see if it exceeds our no bid limit, and if it does, then we bid it out. I'm not comfortable with...
With doing just a partial?
Yeah, I mean, who knows, right?
Can I ask you a question? How come we had a committee of the whole meeting on this? I mean, I wish that this would have came up in a committee of a whole meeting, so we could have discussed it.
Actually, Trustee Dropka, I mentioned it at the committee of the whole meeting.
Yeah, you did, you did, and I, I failed in this past week to, to get that information.
I did mention it.
Isn't one of the issues too, that there are not a lot of companies that repair bridges like the one that we have?
Well, our bridge is somewhat unique. There's only two in the state, I think, that are foot bridges of this type of construction. There are other suspension bridges. This is the architectural firm for, you know, working it out. That's not to say that aren't more companies that, than one that actually work on the bridges. This would be for the, for the documentation, for the specifications and so forth. So we can, we can delay this or we can make it a conditional approval, so if you'd like, we can act upon this and then I can call a special meeting if we, if we really have to revise this and go to bids.
Why don't we table it for now? Rescind, have Trustee Clark rescind her bid. Let's table it for now, make sure that our ducks are in a row, and then we can revisit the issue.
This isn't a lowest bidder situation, is it? I mean, I'd hate to get us into that situation.
Well...
The lowest most qualified bidder.
Lowest qualified bidder, yeah. And who's going to judge that? With the company that actually did the inspection of the bridge is kind of tricky, you know? They've already come up with the, with the inspection and the things that really need to be done, so now we're putting a fine, fine point on that to get the documents in preparation for that.
At the end of the day, it's our decision which falls back.
Well, it's...
Um, yeah, I don't know. Yeah, lowest responsible bidder is...
Probably at the end of the day, it is our decision on who is the most qualified, but they will, we would also be checking their credentials and other work, and if they, you know, have the education and the certifications, you know, that's, all goes into how you qualify, you know, a company to, to do your work. So just so officially, I will rescind my motion.
Motion, and we'll, and I apologize, I'll do my due diligence and get that...
And Mike, you have to rescind the second.
I rescind the second.
Okay, I, I have a withdrawal of the motion and the second to award this contract, and I will double check the limits for no bid and get back to you, and we can schedule a special meeting if necessary to get this moving. We could probably wait until next month because it, it's really just for the drafting of all, so we, I will get that information, though.
Okay, thank you.
My apologies. All righty, onto the next item. I just, I have not put out the RFP yet for law firms, but I am putting it out there one more time if anyone has any that I should include in the request for proposal, or if there's any other thoughts that you have. We discussed things that are important, somebody to be at our meetings when, when needed, not necessarily every time, and to discuss the kinds of projects we anticipate needing help with. If there's nothing else, then we can move on from that, and I will be putting out RFPs. Okay, my report, basically, it's been a pretty busy month. We, as you all know, we had the shred event on the twelfth, and thank you very much to Trustees Hylandbach and Clark for being there all day with me, as well as our assessor was there, and typical, three out of four times we've done this, it did rain, so if there's ever a drought, we'll just schedule one of these. But it was very popular. We've gotten thanks and calls for doing that, and in view of the fact that we were told that day that in spring, they, those times...
Fill up.
Fill up very quickly. I did schedule them for the spring, and that is March, I believe it comes to the twentieth?
I think it's...
I, I know that I emailed you about it.
Yeah, I have to look.
But I believe that our day is March twentieth. Yes, the shredding event. Both the Masonic Lodge and the shredding company have, have noted that, and we, they've reserved that date for us. Then I did meet by Zoom with the people who work the Community Resource Center to iron out some of the details that had come from the mental health board. We discussed things like setting up email that all of them could have access to so that people could contact us that way, and a couple of other items that they were a little bit unclear on. So that, I think that was a very valuable meeting with them. You've all heard, we had an incident with the freezer that used to hold our turkeys for Thanksgiving, and I will have some comments on how that'll affect us going forward, but we did have the insurance adjuster give us a generous approval to fix that room, so we will do that. We are still, I'm not reaching out for contractors to do that quite yet because we're still trying to eliminate the smell. Before we put carpeting down, I want to try to get that cleaned up as best possible, so the custodians have been working on that on kind of a daily basis. Other than that, Farmer's Market was quite successful this year. I also shared those numbers with you. We had a lot more participation than we did last year, and as kind of an executive decision, since the Farmer's Market ended the second week into the month, I didn't want to leave the rest of the food pantry recipients in the cold, so the rest of the month, I've purchased fifteen dollar gift cards, and we are including that for either Riverside Foods or Aldi, so that they can get fresh foods there since all our things are shelf-stable. And we've gotten very good reaction to that. I also attended the Brookfield Library beam signing. They're building that new library, and they had an event a couple of weekends ago, and I did represent us, since I keep getting invited because we gave them some money towards it a while back, and so I signed on behalf of the township one of the first beam that's going to hold the roof. And other than that, I'd be glad to answer any other questions, but a lot of the items have simply been keeping up with business in the township. Okay?
Supervisor, is it possible in our food bags to put a little postcard in there about the Presbyterian Church Little Food Pantry, because they have a refrigerator full of fresh produce that I, I know they get a couple times a week?
Sure, I'll check with them first so that I don't get inundated, but I will look into that.
And I have talked to Peter at Riverside Foods, and he is interested in a little bit more of a formal relationship, maybe?
Yeah, I, I have spoken with him. He just, yeah, that's fine, but he has begged me not to make it like a voucher system where anybody has to calculate.
Right.
So that's why I bought gift cards from there, and then people can purchase what they need to with it. Hopefully, it'll all be for fresh food and meats, but...
I think the gift cards are a great way to go.
Mm-hmm.
I would prefer at a place that does sell candy, alcohol, and that kind of stuff, that we, at the Farmer's Market, I'm fine with not putting any restrictions on it, but at a place like Aldi or Riverside Foods, I would like to see some categorization of what they're able to buy.
Yeah, I, I wish I could say that, you know, I, I have spoken with Peter as well, and the, the trouble is, you know, we, we can't buy a gift card that only allows that. So if it's a small enough gift card, you know, so that they can get something, that's great. You know, both stores do sell alcohol. I don't see that as an issue when I look at my food pantry clients. Frankly, most of our clients are elderly people who are trying to make, make ends meet. That's a large part of it, so...
I would agree with you. I don't think that's, you know, the gift cards are nominal. I mean...
Peter has specifically asked me not to make his cashiers try to figure out what is or isn't qualified.
Right, and I think that's, it's a good solution. I mean, you're going to have some type of, you know, risk with anything you do. So, I mean, I, I agree, most of our food pantry recipients are seniors.
Yes.
And I think that they'll be happy to be getting some fresh fruit and veggies.
It was interesting, because today we had a couple of people ask, they thought that the event that was going on by the water tower was the Farmer's Market, and they said, "Don't you have any vouchers for that?" I said, "No, this time it's a food truck event," and, "No, we don't." So...
You know, and there's not, the couple times I was at the Farmer's Market this summer, I didn't see any candy there because...
The closest thing, yeah, this year Aunt Diana's didn't...
At the Farmer's Market, I'm fine with it, but...
Yeah.
Once they go to the store that's serving alcohol and other items that aren't direct food related, I'd like to see a little bit more. I mean, there's risk, but I'd like to mitigate the risk.
Yeah.
If this is the system, it's the system.
Yeah, again, if the vendor is not willing to, you know, unless they could create some kind of a voucher that was strictly a food voucher or, and allow it, you know, to be done that way, but again, they have the cards and they're, they prefer to deal with those. I mean, that's what he told me last Christmas when I went after it, and, and, you know, when I talked to him about this too. They, they have been helping us sometimes get items when hand goods were being restricted by my usual suppliers, so they've allowed us to, they'd order extra so that I could get cases, cases of certain items. So they've been very helpful in that regard, but on the fresh food, I mean, I can talk to him again, but I don't know, he's going to tell me, "No, don't make my cashiers make that judgment," or refuse somebody, you know? Generally speaking, also, people are buying more than just the, the gift card's worth, so, okay, our gift card bought the good stuff and they're using their own money for the naughty stuff? I mean, I don't know. We can only control people so much, anyway. Any other questions regarding my activities or my, what I have to report on? Then Trustees' reports, Mary Robb? Trustee Clark, do you have something for us?
Well, we've been trying to make the exercise class, the senior exercise class, a little more creative, a little more fun, and so it will flow smoother. And our goal is to get twelve really good exercise classes filmed, and then we can use those over the next three months, and then we can actually repeat them. So I did ask kind of an acting coach to come in to help with the movements of the two trainers, and she's also going to make some suggestions on the way it's filmed. We're also going to add some lively music to, afterwards, they can put in the music to make it, you know, a little more jazzy, you know, to exercise.
They don't use music when they're in, in-house, though, do they?
They do. Jerry brings it up on his phone.
Oh, okay, okay.
So, so they do do some of the music. We also purchased a big, well, not a giant timer, but a big timer, so when they do something for thirty seconds, we can have that timer on the stage.
Okay.
And then they can film, I, I believe there are going to be two cameras, so one can, you know, like, go to the timer and one can go to the person.
Like a split screen?
Um, is it going to be a split screen? I don't think so. I doubt it's going to be split screen.
Okay.
But there's, and then my latest idea, I think as part of this exercise series, which will not involve the current trainer, is to have a dance party and to bring in, you know, like a dance like you would do at a wedding. So, and use that, maybe show that on Fridays, and to film four of those, and then if we have the twelve good exercise classes, that would give us four months of stuff, of good videos, four good dance classes, and then we could repeat them, because I think we're not going to be able to meet in person.
For a long time.
For a long time.
Yeah.
So as far as...
So kind of like line dancing stuff? Is that what you're talking about at, at a wedding, or what kind of?
You know, just, you know, when you, the music plays, you get up and you dance.
Okay.
So, and I'm not very good at music, so I'm the wrong person to fix the dance music, but I can find out something. And then as part of this, I thought we could get some kids from town to come, I, for my dance party, I would like both male and females and different ages, so we could... and different ages. So, we could get, you know, six to eight kids to come in that can dance, and, you know, just have a dance party.
So, Riverside Township Dance...
Riverside Township Dance Party.
Dance Party, okay.
You know, maybe, you know, we can do one, you know, targeting like New Year's Eve, and, you know, have streamers, and those blowy things.
Okay.
Something like that.
You're just, this just came to you, right, Trustee Clark? I mean, you're just throwing out an idea. You don't have...
Well, it didn't just come to me like this minute, when I was talking about it.
A little bit sooner than that.
A little sooner than that, okay.
But I have been thinking about that.
Yeah, well, then, you're going to put a proposal together.
Right.
And so...
And again, social-distanced and all that.
Yeah, and all that stuff, right.
And I have not spent any of my money in the budget this year, because we're not doing our monthly meetings, and getting some guest speakers, and things like that. So, I do have money out of the senior budget that I am going to use to pay for this.
Perfect.
So, it's not any additional expense to the township. You know, I have that money that we've already budgeted for, and I'm not spending all of it either. So, it's just a portion of it. And then, I did order t-shirts for the trainers to wear while they're being videotaped. That say Riverside Township on the back, and then they have 150th logo on the front. And I think that will create a more professional look, to have them both in the same t-shirts.
You know, for your dance party, there's these DJs. I've been to a lot of bar mitzvahs in my life. And they'll have five, six, eight people in the crowd, teaching them how to do the dances as well. It's really fun. So, instead of just a DJ, they have eight dancers out there saying, "Come on, you, do this step, that step." It really gets...
That could be an option, too, that I can talk to you, maybe get a name, you know?
Yeah.
That'd be great. But, you know, it's just, you know, it would be a fun way to get them moving.
Right.
That was the purpose of this. And it would be different than, you know, the regular exercise class.
Do we have any measurement of how many people are actually viewing?
The only views that we get, we don't, we can't measure the views that we get...
So, just the YouTube?
When, at noon, on that, we get the YouTube.
The YouTube we can measure, right.
And then, once this is completed, you know, we're going to send out a mailing or a postcard or something, you know, trying to market this. And the other thing is, if having kids from town, I'm hoping that they'll have parents and parents' friends and grandparents that will tune in to watch them.
Okay. All right. Well, thanks for that. Thank you for that report. Trustee Droppka, do you have anything for us today?
No report, no.
Okay. Trustee Lupfer?
No report.
And how about Trustee Highlandbach? I see that we have a lot of things.
Yeah, the Mental Health Board held, came back from their summer break and held their meeting. We approved the Community Resource Center, the other half of their budget for the beginning of, or the end of this year. So, they're paid in full. They've seen an uptick in people contacting them. And we've also put together, as you can see in your packet, a resource guide, which tells them, which tells people where they can get the help that they need. It's not just our core agencies, it's agencies all over the area. That's worked out. We are going to be discussing our budget beginning at our next meeting. They have it finalized for this board's approval at the next meeting. And all in all, things are going well. We've also approved emergency first aid training for our fire departments in the township, at no cost to the fire department. The Riverside Township Mental Health Board will take care of the cost of that. And that's for mental health, for first responders training. We have a couple of other ideas that I'll be discussing with the board to help out our seniors with some things. And I look forward to this year. I think it's going to be really good. Our newest member, Adam, has done, gained prepared for the meeting, was well-received. So, I think it's going to be a real good board, and I think we're going to have a great year.
Very good, thank you. Yeah, it's my understanding that on the postcard, they even are trying to do QR code to link to that resource.
Right.
So, that's the resource guide. That's good. Are there any plans for when they might want to start being here in person? Or are they going to find, are they finding that telephone, and perhaps with the addition of email, they'll have...
I think they're waiting for the state to open up a little further before they want to meet in person. I understand that completely.
That's okay. It gives us time to clean up Room Three.
Right. But, I mean, the phone seems to be working all right. The answering machine is working. And there has been an uptick, and they are answering their calls. So, as long as the residents of the township are getting the help that they're requesting, I think that, for the time being, with the circumstances as they are, that this is the best thing to do.
Tim, do you have a time when you think the postcard is going to go out?
I think they'll probably be going out shortly, within the next, I would say, month.
And they're going to go to every member of the township?
Every household?
Every household, yes.
Same way as the newsletter goes.
Okay.
They've been talking to us about the mailing list, and how it's distributed and so forth. All right. Thank you very much.
I have a question. I've brought up several times in the past that I think our first responders need alternative training on what to do with mental health issues, rather than dropping them off at the police department. And then, there's this article about our police chief going to the state. Isn't this something that we should be doing? Can't we, we have all the resources and the connections locally, to be able to say, "This organization, Segwin, Pillars, this, that..."
The police department has a list of all the organizations. They also have a social worker. We offered the police department to help pay for a social worker, and they already have one on staff.
So, we offered to help them with this issue?
Oh, yes, absolutely. They, we haven't offered the help. What we've done, what we're doing is, we're providing the training for their police officers, at no cost to them, or the village, and to our firefighters, so they know how to handle these mental health crises. They also have a listing of all the service agencies in the area. So, they know who the service agents are in the area. So, and if they're a Riverside Township resident, they get help automatically through that agency.
This Chief Wetzel's position has a disconnect from that. He's saying he doesn't have, he needs help with those situations. And we're saying that they have that help. I think this is something we should step up and offer our assistance on, and say, "Chief, we can do this in-house. You don't have to go to the state." Because, obviously, with what's going on these days, sending police to a mental health crisis gets you in lots of trouble. I think we could be doing something to help with this situation.
I'll discuss it with our board, and we'll see what our budget says.
Tim, didn't the other police have a training last year?
Yes, they did. But, they have to have continuous, they have to get certified every year on mental health training. So, we're providing that training for them. And we just got Loyola Hospital for the fire department, so the medics with the mental health first responder training. NAMI is taking care of that. But, I will look into, and I'll talk to Chief Wetzel myself, if I have to. And I will find out exactly what he needs. And if we can provide it for him, we will do it. As the Mental Health Board has always come through on different programs and for the township. So, I'll talk to Chief Wetzel myself.
The Mental Health Board in this township is great, and a wonderful resource. I have one other question. I know you were trying, going to do a program on suicide. Do we have a date for that?
We have not set a date on that. Again, we just came back last month. We had a lot of stuff on our plate to clean up and finish up. I will see if we can get that date for you at the next meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks. Any other questions? Anything else on those reports? All right. Thank you. Under new business, we, you have there the report from the adjuster regarding Room Three. So, as you can see, they're going above and beyond, and they feel that our policy will pay for the replacement of the carpeting, including baseboard, and including some skim coat underneath, because the tile floor underneath very likely could, needs ceiling, let's just put it that way. And they'll even, they believe that there will be some wall damage, and they'll pay for the painting as well. So, I'm pleased. If any of you have, again, if you have some contractors that you'd like to refer me to for this project, we are still trying to get that area cleaned as much as possible. The juices kind of ran into the edge of the floor and under the baseboard, and so it's still great fun.
Vera, can I ask a question? Are we going to put that freezer in a spot where it can't be accessed?
Well, okay, so the freezer has had to be trashed. Because freezers like that, today, the insulation in those is kind of like a Styrofoam that absorbs all of those juices. And we tried and tried, and then I spoke with the adjuster as well, and he said, "Yeah, you're never going to get that out of there." The way they're constructed, you're never going to get that smell out.
So, we don't have a freezer?
So, we don't have a freezer anymore, right. And I have a proposal for what to do about that. We really were using it only once a year, so, new plan.
Thank you.
Sure. Okay. And basically, that freezer, it had to be trashed, and we're supposed to deal at this board with any disposal of equipment. It only ran us about $300 at the time. But, I'm reporting to you that it had to be trashed, and I would welcome a motion to approve that disposal of it.
So moved.
Second.
Of a motion and a second. Motion by Trustee Clark, second by Trustee Droppka, to dispose of the freezer that is, has been rendered unusable. Any discussion?
Thank you, Vera, for doing that. I know you all had to live with that smell for a couple of days. That was god-...
It was a smell that we couldn't get out of our sinuses. And we would, I'd fall asleep at night and go...
You'd smoke. It was horrible.
Yes. I won't soon forget it. Anyway, I have a motion to dispose of the freezer by trashing it. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. Sorry, should that have been a roll call? Probably. Let's do that by roll call.
You want a roll call?
Please.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Droppka?
Yes.
Trustee Hollenbach?
Yes.
Trustee Lupfer?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilt?
Yes.
Motion is carried.
Thank you. All right. Next item is meeting and holidays for 2021. They don't have to be approved right now. It is only October, but they are here for your perusal.
Do we have to approve those?
We do have to approve them each year, but...
Did anything change?
These are all standard, and all of the holidays are pretty much standard. You will note that Christmas Eve would be the day, because it's the day right before the holiday, and that's typically how holidays are observed, both, you know, in most government offices.
Yeah, so none of these changed from last year, correct?
They did not.
Okay. I make a motion that we approve the calendar for 2021.
I have a motion by Trustee Droppka to approve the calendar for, both pages, the township meetings, holidays, as well as the committee of the whole meetings. They can always be canceled, but this way, they're on the calendar.
I second it.
I have a second by Trustee Highlandbach. Any discussion? Any concerns about changing any of the, are all those holidays acceptable? Or should we go with it more politically correct on anything?
They seem fine to me.
Okay. Very good, very good. Then, I have a motion and second on the floor. All in favor of approving the township calendar for the year 2021, that being both pages, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Nay. Motion is carried. Okay. So, on the food pantry, as I told you, I have purchased, you know, gift cards to cover the fresh foods, now that Farmer's Market is closed. But, we do have holiday meals coming up. We've now disposed of the freezer. Frankly, that was more of a pain than I wanted with the, seriously, with the purchasing turkeys, and then just waiting to see how many people would actually show up for them. But, we could just give holiday meal gift cards. I'd be happy to do it at any vendors that you see appropriate. But, I think that we should probably do that, both for Thanksgiving, as well as the Christmas holidays. The question would be, how much do you think it should be? We calculated that the cost that we were putting out in the turkey dinner and all was somewhere between $30 and $35, probably. And we did give $35 gift cards last year for...
Easter, wasn't it?
Yeah, for Christmas.
Oh, Christmas. Did we do something in Easter, too?
No.
No, we were going to, and we didn't do.
No, we talked about it, and then decided, I think, that it was maybe too much of a religious, there was no, you know, there's a bunch of holidays, even if you don't celebrate Christmas. There are a lot of holidays at that time of year. But, the Easter was questionable, I guess, so...
Wouldn't you need a vote on this, Vera?
Well, probably would be helpful for Thanksgiving to decide, at least, tonight.
I would say, I make the motion that we provide $35 gift cards for Thanksgiving dinner.
Are you going to say how many? Like, 45?
I would say, no. That would be left up to, what do you think, Supervisor Wilt?
So, we did have an uptick in utilization, and I think that the longer this pandemic continues, and longer that there is unemployment, we're going to get more. We were, we do get new takers every month. And we, we've had some that dropped off. A little concerned, as a matter of fact, that people who were coming regularly until April, many of them stopped. And I think it's just because they've been homebound, and other people are shopping for them, hopefully. But, they haven't been coming out. But, we probably are getting around 40 people.
So, we should order, like, 43, same as last, 42, same as last year?
No, I would say...
I think we should go 45.
I would say, order 60. I mean, what difference does it make? Because if you're going to give them out to Christmas anyways, so, order 60.
We can use them then.
And then, we'll see what we have left at the end of Thanksgiving, take a new vote December, be done with it.
As you can see, we had, like, the number of people in recent months over the summer that were using, you can tell by the Farmer's Market vouchers, and there were a total of 48 individuals who got that during the summer months. And so, yeah, 50, 60 is not out of the question.
I, yeah, that's what I would say. I would suggest doing the higher, the higher, because we're going to use them anyways, so...
What if we, and I don't know if this is possible, what if we ordered 30 gift cards from Aldi's and 30 from Riverside Foods, and they would have a choice?
That's what we actually, I did that for the $15 ones, too. I find that, like, the North Riversideers who are closer... I find that like the North Riversideers who are closer to an Aldi tend to ask for that, that one. Some Riversideers too, they feel that they maybe can buy more for their money, but, but yeah, we can certainly split that.
Would it make sense to do 40, 20, or would just an even 30, 30? 30 from Aldi's, 30 from Riverside Foods, or do you have more that go to Aldi's?
Probably. We probably do have more that go to.
Like 40 from Aldi's and 20 Riverside Foods?
I personally think that we should keep it in the township.
Me too.
Yeah.
I really do. Riverside.
And, yeah, we can.
Real good does.
He has been, he's a great.
Well, and for the holidays, I mean, I, you know, I think that they're gonna have all kinds of sales and people will shop sales. So we could do them all from Riverside Foods for the holiday gifts.
Is that for both Thanksgiving and Christmas? Are we talking?
Well, we're gonna approve for 60 of them from Riverside Foods and we'll see what we have left over and then we can vote on some more if we need more for the Christmas.
Right.
I would say Riverside Foods is the way to go.
I, I can go, I'm, I'm okay with that.
Yeah. When we had Jewel, I could have gone with that. They were still in the township, but there's no store that's gonna be in there for a while. So, you know, it really is the only grocer within the township limits.
Let's.
Okay.
Do 60 cards of $35 each from Riverside Foods?
So I have, do I have a motion for that?
Tim, you.
Tim had the motion.
Tim, amend.
I'll revise my motion and make it, I make a motion that we approve 60 $35 gift cards from Riverside Foods for our Thanksgiving and partial for Christmas. We'll see what we have left. We can always revisit it.
Okay. And did I have a second on that?
Second.
I have a motion by Trustee Hollenbach, seconded by Trustee Clark, to purchase 60 $35 gift cards for Thanksgiving holidays with overlap to Christmas if necessary from Riverside Foods. Any discussion? Hearing none. Uh, that is an expenditure, so Clerk Blau, would you please call the roll?
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Dropka?
Yes.
Trustee Hollenbach?
Yes.
Trustee Lubfer?
Aye.
Uh, Supervisor Wilt?
Yes.
Motion is carried.
Okay. Thank you. Um, and then we had a request here. We're not really a merchant, but we have a request from the Riverside Arts Center for promotional opportunity, seeking support for their Holiday Harvest silent auction. What is your pleasure? We need to get back to them this week?
Motion to table.
We should have to get it back to them this week.
I don't know what, what kind of action do you want done on this? I don't see.
Yeah, the only thing we could get them would be some kind of a gift certificate or something like that. It's not like we can give them a certificate for township services. They already get that.
I think the question is, do we want to donate a gift certificate for this? And if we're keeping it, you know, in the township, what about a $50 gift certificate to Choo Choo?
I, I made a motion to table.
It wasn't seconded.
I have, yeah, I have a motion to table. Do I hear a second?
I'll second it.
Can't do two motions on the table, so we had to deal with one.
I, I can.
Okay. So I have a motion and a second to table. We vote on that, don't we? All in favor of tabling this?
A second was by Lubfer?
Lubfer, yes.
Thank you.
All, all in favor of tabling, signified by saying aye.
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 All opposed, nay. Motion is carried. Okay. And then I'm calling your attention, this is all in your perspective magazine. If you want to participate this year, you don't have to travel. We mentioned it in our committee of the hall, this is simply a reminder, I think, that, that you have to decide if you're available on the day that for your particular group meetings. If you want us to register you, let us know. Please call the office as soon as possible so we can get this taken care of because they want registrations by October 30th, if possible, and no refunds after November 9th, so. That is basically for your, your consideration and to let us know if you need to go. I'm providing you a copy of what was both published and submitted. This is a little bit superfluous. We like to cover, cover our assets as we say. So the fact that we already had an audited financial report, we actually covered this, but there's always reminders to file the treasurer's report and some people like to see this format. So we have done both and, as I said, it was both published and it was submitted to the county and, and the state. So are there any questions on it? Pretty self, self-explanatory. It's just there for your, so you have a copy of it in your hands.
I'm sure this is a simplistic way to look at it, but we had 1.3 million in revenues and we had 1.4 million in expenditures.
Yeah. If, if, yeah, you look at it that way. Total expenditures, other expenditures were smaller and, um.
What was that?
That included the, you know, the elevator work, which was an unusual.
Right. So that's.
Expenditures, so that pretty much is, that's pretty close to what we spent on the elevator that was.
That's the difference.
Pretty much.
Unforeseen circumstances.
Yeah.
Are there other revenue streams that we're not seeing here? Is there?
No, all we get is either property taxes, the return of the personal property taxes. We, what probably is a wash elsewhere, we get back because we participate for our liability insurances. It is a risk management organization, so we always get a dividend back from them, but you're pretty much seeing everything that, that is there.
So if we had used the reserve fund that we have for the building for the elevator repair, we, this would look much more imbalanced.
Mm-hmm.
All right. So it's basically an accounting issue?
Well, I mean, we did, we did use those reverse, the reserve funds, but those are, those are among the, the funds of the township. All right.
So it just depends on which account we're taking from it.
Yeah. Robbing Peter to pay Paul, sometimes, sometimes. Okay. But we count on the fact that we have reserves in our budgeting as well, so. And we, you know, sometimes there are greater refunds on taxes than we anticipate as well. Okay. You have the website report. We have not met in person since, pretty much since COVID. So if you have any questions, I can pose them and get back to you on where we are. I wish we had more things that would draw people to the website, but when you're not doing much, you don't get a lot of hits, so.
Um, she has on this page too about they started creating transcripts for the exercise classes and they'd like to know how we'd like to proceed. And I would say, let's put that on hold.
Okay.
Because if we get these 16 good ones, I think we can take down the 31s that are not.
Okay. All right. I will do that.
Yeah, I'd like to see us kind of reevaluate our goals with the website.
Right.
I, I think we, you know, shoot for the moon, of course. Maybe we.
That might be a point of discussion for a committee of the whole meeting.
Right.
We might want to do that at our next meeting and, and take a look at our communications, you know, process and see where we want to go with that.
So our next committee of the whole meeting, we might have to change, that's election day, November 3rd, so we might need to change that to a different day.
Yeah.
There's not much going on that day.
The trick would be to find a room that we could meet in. Yeah, we probably, and I don't know if, you know, the day before or later that week would work better for anybody here.
Uh, Wednesday's good? I agree Wednesday or Thursday.
First Wed.
I can't make it first Wednesday.
Yeah, first Wednesday, I have another meeting. I have a.
I can be at any meeting.
What'd you say?
I'd like to be at any meeting.
What about Thursday, November 5th?
That would be all right with me. We might have to, I think that the village has first Thursday meetings, so we wouldn't be in here, but we don't need as bigger room for that anyway.
So the village is meeting up here?
I believe so. Aren't they the first and third?
I think, yeah, I think you're right.
First and third Thursdays, I believe, so.
Do we need a committee of the whole meeting to know? Yeah, maybe we just push it until December.
We could do that too. I mean, it's totally up to this body.
I, I'd say we push it till December. I would agree.
And you want to cancel the November one?
Yeah. Election day.
Sure.
So then we're talking about December 1st, Tuesday, December 1st for the committee of the whole?
Yes. Okay.
At 6:30?
Yes. Yes, they're scheduled for 6:30. All right, we'll put notice that the November one is canceled and. We're, yeah. We'll note that. Okay. And just for your information, the township officials of Cook County were kind enough, there's the correspondence about it, to waive dues since there's nothing going on. And I wasn't sure if you received it from them, so I did send you, I forwarded you their directory that was sent to me today. So enjoy. But I understand it was sent to at least some of you as well. All right. Regarding the township tax levy, we usually don't deal with that until November. However, I just want to give you a heads up that so far it looks like the CPI is quite low and it's the, in the 1 to 1.3 range. The Social Security Administration just approved a 1.3 only, so. That it, you know, we won't be getting a whole lot more there. I also have seen a little bit of sluggishness in the collections of taxes, so, but we'll see. I, I think that that's because the deadline was extended, so. We, I did get some deposits within the last two weeks as well, so. Any other thoughts on, on the levy? I mean, I, I'm gonna keep it low. Everybody's taxed enough, so I think we need to keep it as reasonable as possible. And once again, I don't plan to increase the levy for the general assistance just because, you know, we don't need more than, we've already, I've already been raising the amount and we've, we've banked some over the time. Okay. Then on to the approval of the warrants. And Trustee Clark, you want to?
I move that the board authorize and ratify the payment of the bills identified on the general warrant for October 13th, 2020 in the amount of $39,364.56.
Do I hear a second?
I second it.
I have a motion by Trustee Clark, seconded by Trustee Hollenbach, to approve the general warrant for October 2020 in the amount of $39,364.56. Clerk Blau, would you take the roll?
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Dropka?
Yes.
Trustee Hollenbach?
Yes.
Trustee Lubfer?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilt?
Yes.
Motion is carried.
Trustee Clark?
Oh, um. Uh, I make the motion that the board ratify and authorize the payment of the amounts indicated on the following warrants. Utility warrant, $1,343.12. Payroll warrant, $18,831.52. Health warrant, $1,322.61. Grants, $532.97. General assistance, $5,000. Township radio players, $200. Food pantry warrant, $2,275.20.
Thank you. Do I hear a second?
I second it.
I have a motion by Trustee Clark, seconded by Trustee Hollenbach, to approve the following warrants. The utility warrant in the amount of $1,343.12. Payroll warrant in the amount of $18,831.52. The health warrant in the amount of $1,322.61. The grants warrant in the amount of $532.97. The general assistance warrant in the amount of $5,000 even. The township radio players warrant in the amount of $200. The food pantry warrant in the amount of $2,275.20. And Clerk Blau?
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Dropka?
Yes.
Trustee Hollenbach?
Yes.
Trustee Lubfer?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilt?
Yes.
Motion is carried.
Just a heads up, it's already a budgeted item, but I do plan to transfer some money into food pantry from our general funds because, because we need to.
Uh, one, one, I don't mean to drag this out and I didn't hear it in your report and I completely forgot about it until we were halfway through the agenda. And I know you and I spoke about it, but I didn't know that other board members were pervy about the CARES funding and you.
Oh, yes.
Applying for that.
Yes, I, that's, that's right. I, I'm applying for it. It's, it's due by the end of the month. The Cook County did, at first they said no, and then they approved funding for townships for the, the various needs that were prompted by the COVID pandemic. And therefore, we have been allocated $5,000 in this township. I don't think we're gonna quite make that threshold because of, you know, what expenditures, but we're looking at other, any other items that we need to do, but we're pulling together all of the invoices and, and putting together the application to apply for that money.
Great. And what was the name of that, please?
Well, it's CARES, it's Cook County that has approved, it's part of the CARES money that they got from the federal government. And so that, that is what has been, they, they notified each township of how much was allocated to that township and I'm sure it was based on population and such.
So we were allocated 5,000?
5,000 is, yeah, is the.
Okay, so we're gonna submit our expenses. So if they're under 5,000, we would get, say they're 3,000, we would get that 3,000 back?
Yes. Okay. Yes, that's my understanding of.
Uh, you know what? And now that we were thinking about, we should put that senior.
Exactly. I was just, great minds think alike, that some of the, the fact that we've been televising the.
Oh, we can put that.
Exercise classes, yes.
Oh, that'd be wonderful.
Cause we were thinking, Supervisor and I were thinking about what could qualify here and, and I completely forgot about that. That would be.
You know what? That's a great.
Yeah, because I mean, it's easy to think about things like, oh, you got sanitizer and you got masks and gloves and, and you had to purchase, you know, shields and all that kind of thing. You don't always think of what else changed because of it. And it's okay if it's something that, the items that are allowed under it, and I did take part in a, TAC offered a webinar on it, so I took part in that webinar to, to understand exactly what was there. But if it's something that will be needed going forward still, you know, even if it was an investment, that's okay.
That's great. Motion to adjourn. Do we redo that?
Motion to adjourn by Trustee Clark. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Seconded by Trustee Dropka. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion is carried. Thank you very much.